Okay, I'd like to call tonight's meeting the Advocate Zoning Board of Appeals. First order of business is discussion of the approval of minutes from February 13th, 2025. We're trying to entertain a motion on that. I move that approved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Correspondence mail, electronic mail. We did get some things from the planning board about things they're proposing to change to zoning laws. We really don't have any say in that other than our opinions, which we've already given. So just wanted to acknowledge that we received those and that the Board of Selectmen will be discussing and deciding on those on February, right?
They have to be approved by town meeting.
Town meeting.
Special town meeting.
Town meeting. So we'll move on to our...
A second.
Oh.
We're good on it?
Acknowledging.
Yeah. Very good.
The first item for discussion tonight is a petition by Bedford Street Church of Christ for a special permit under section 175-58.2I, one to legalize the digital sign or electronic sign, and for waivers under section 175-58.3B1. The property is owned by Church of Christ in Milton. The property is located at 21 South Bedford Street, Abington, Mass., located on Assessor's Map, six lot two in the residential R30 zone. And could have someone come up and tell us what this is about? And let us know your name and address, please, sir.
Home address?
Yeah.
My name is Maurice Davis. I'm the minister, pastor for the Bedford Street Church of Christ in 106 Walter's Way in Stoughton. And we were made aware of the last year that when we purchased the sign, that the installer did not follow the proper procedure of beginning permits, and we were made aware of that. And so we started the process of filling out paperwork, should have been filled out, getting aware of documentation that you guys need to do.
So the sign's already up then?
Yes, the sign's been up for about two years.
Okay. There's a photo in the back.
So this is the old sign, correct? This one?
Yes, this is the old.
Okay.
So what are the nature of the waivers that you're looking for?
So we were made aware that this is the town of Abington was not aware that we were replacing the sign with an entirely different sign. That the understanding was we were replacing the sign with another wood sign like the one that was there. So we were not aware that that communication paperwork had not been submitted, that we were putting up an entirely different sign.
Is this electronic or is it just straight?
It's electronic.
It is electronic, okay.
So we're going to change type messages and temperature and all that kind of stuff that appears on it.
Because we have a thing about, you know, signs changing the...all the time. We don't...we like to have them for a long period of time. You want to put something on it, it's fine. We don't want them switching all the time.
Okay.
So what do you have out there now? Is it...
So since this has started, we have not been using the sign.
Oh, okay.
For the last four or five months, we haven't used the sign.
Because what we're worried about is like distractions when people are driving?
Right.
How they, you know...
Right.
Can flip to one or another type of message, if you will?
Right, and since we were not aware of that. So we were putting up, you know, general church messages, scriptures and things like that. And so in talking with Ms. Wong, we understood what should have happened.
Yep. What's the difference between the new sign and the old sign in height and width? Is it pretty much the same or is it...
So the old sign was more horizontal. It was about that tall from the ground up. And so it's kind of sitting on a metal base, it's kind of rectangular.
Okay, and is it in the same location as it was before?
Uh, yes, approximately the same location.
There's no...there's no problem with vehicles coming out of driveways or vision?
No.
No?
No.
All right.
So it's nowhere near our inch's length of...
Okay.
You're on Route 18, correct?
Right, 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 from the golf course.
Are there any residences near you? I know you're in an R30 zone.
So on the left of us, there is, across the street from us, there is.
Okay.
And we have good relations with them.
So I guess this question might be for more of the zoning department. So does the sign as it currently exists comply with our bylaws?
Um, no, because this has gone the waiver. But, you know, if it's approved, I see no reason to change it, you know, with the normal restrictions, every 60 seconds, no waving, flashing, stuff like that.
And is it lit all night or is it...does it have a time limit on it?
Right, it's lit all night.
Is that something?
So again, that's how we were operating before this came up. And so since then, the only thing, if you drive by, you see the name on the sign and that's it. No messages.
No messages, okay. At night, no messages?
So before, there were messages.
Okay.
And so in talking with Marion, we understood that per guidelines that we were not aware of, there should not be...
Very good.
...messages and things like that.
Very good.
So we are aware, if you guys give permission, that we'll need to streamline how we operate the sign.
Excellent.
You can put conditions on it, how often you want it. It's got to be...
Well, there are rules, right?
Less than once every 60 seconds.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as overnight, general advertising, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
There you go.
Supposed to be off.
Okay.
I mean, you could give them those, if the capacity, you can give them those rules, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, that's right, in the bylaw.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure.
Ready for the questions for him?
In terms of the...so can they have a static sign overnight that just says the name of the property or does it have to shut off completely?
Illumination's supposed to be off overnight.
Okay.
Unless the business is open or, you know, you know, special service or something then.
Okay, so if we're having...we have a Bible class on Wednesday nights from 7:00 to 8:00. So is it okay for the...
Yeah, 11:00 PM is the cutoff.
Oh, no.
But if you have something until midnight, it's a half hour after you finish, it's supposed to be off.
Okay. So the special permit is for the digital sign itself?
Yes.
And the waiver is for the fact that it's in an R30 zone? That's what I was confused about too, yeah?
Yeah.
Any further questions for him or do you want to study some more of the rules?
I just wanted to clarify what the waiver is for. You know, the special permit is for the digital sign.
Yeah. I'm not sure why the waiver is necessary.
175-58...
Was it because of the zoning? Where it is?
We look at 175-58.1.
Yeah, that lines up. Yeah, because there's no way, no special permit for digital.
What was the conclusion on that?
So the waiver is because of the zone.
The zone, okay.
Yeah. It's a residential district.
Okay. If we don't have any further questions from him, I'll ask the audience, is there anyone else who wants to speak on this matter? Okay.
You have to decide, voting members.
Okay.
Obviously voting members, but between Andrew and I, so...
Any preferences?
Well, I am voting on the next one, right?
Right, exactly. So you should take this one. All right, so we declared that. Bringing it back to the table.
Okay. And... Yeah, and then we have to entertain a motion to close the public portion of the discussion, correct?
Second.
Well, somebody has to... That was a motion. I make that motion. Close the hearing.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll have discussion amongst the board members. I don't see any reason not to grant all of these.
No, it's just a hiccup, but it seems to be that he...everything seems to be working out with the building inspector department. If we do approve it, they didn't do anything rational or anything that...
Also seem to be very responsive to the concerns that Marion brought up recently.
Yes.
So we appreciate that. Okay, any other discussion? Entertain a motion on this matter?
Okay, on the petition of Bedford Street Church of Christ for a special permit under 175-58.2I to legalize a digital sign or electronic sign into waivers under 175-58.3B1, I move that we approve the special permit and the waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. So we'll get you a letter that states those...states our approval of these things. They usually have me sign it within a few days and then they'll give it to you. It has to be filed with the town clerk, right?
Yes.
So, but thank you very much. We'll get paperwork soon.
Good luck with everything.
Take care.
Take care now.
All right. The next matter before us is a continued petition by property owner Daniel Driscoll for a special permit under section 175-21-H2, 3, and 5 for open lot storage of registered transport vehicles and trailers, open lot storage of registered trucks and trailers used for temporary storage, and open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with the commercial or industrial use. The property is located at 890 Bedford Street on Assessor's Map, 52 lot...lots, 68 and 69 in the highway commercial zone. Mr. Driscoll, would you come up and give us another summary? This matter was continued last month as we had a concern about the extent to which proper notification had been made to abutters. So we're back again and if you could summarize for us why you're here and what you're doing and wanted to do with your property.
Just before you start, I just want to again, I'm recusing myself from this.
Okay, and he's refusing?
It'll be me, you and...
Right, yeah.
All right, I'm Dan Driscoll, the owner of 890 Bedford Street, and again, I'm requesting a special permit for the open lot storage of your man. From last meeting, basically, I go to the property two or three times a week. It's just empty dumpsters. There's nothing, there's no trash, there's no nothing in it, I'm speaking of storage. I have took pictures today to show you what basically it looks like, just to show you.
These are from today.
This is middle. Yeah, it's a whole...that's the whole back, yeah. Again, I go there two or three times a day, I mean, a week. I pick up the dumpster, we do house cleanouts. It's only their furniture, cellar, attic, materials. There is no chemicals, there's no paints, there's no food. I don't even mess with that sort of product, so... Once we're done with the cleanup, we go to the dump, we dump the product, we come back and put the dumpster back where it goes. So I have like five dumpsters there, they're only 15 meters, they're not 40, they're not 30, they're just 15, so I don't do the big dumpsters. And the dump trucks are not big ones, they're just normal six-wheel dump trucks. And I have history of...
And what hours would you be doing, just so we're aware of it?
Honestly, I...last week, we did one, and I was there at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, picked up a dumpster, came back and was done by 5:00. I don't work on Sundays, I have banquet hours, so I don't go there early.
So you're not there outside of like Tru cheese hours, which is, they close at 8:00 most nights except Sunday.
So this looks a heck of a lot cleaner than the other pictures we were looking at last time.
Those pictures are two or three years old.
So you've done a lot of work here. So how long have you been storing dumpsters on this property?
Probably about two years.
And you didn't have proper permits, did?
No, I did not. I did not know I had it, because I know the property was municipal zone, so I just figured, you do anything you want, I guess. Plus the product, when I bought that, Hanson Tree owned it, and they had all their trucks there and everything, so I just didn't assume I had full权.
Because when I look at what you're asking for, there's nothing here that says dumpsters. I mean...
It says open contained storage, open lot storage of registered vehicles and trailers.
It says trailers, it doesn't say anything about dumpsters. I mean, I mean, why are we here again? I mean, who is in control of where dumpsters can go? I mean, is it the Board of Health or is it us?
The Board of Health controls dumpsters, it's clear, food, household type refuse, commercial 30-yard type roll-offs or 15, whatever, Board of Health has no interest in.
So basically, anyone can, if they have a commercial piece of property, they can store dumpsters?
It's kind of what we're trying to figure out, if they're considered open lot storage.
I don't understand how they're open...I mean, it's a dumpster, it's not a storage for construction, it's not, it's not landscaping material, it's not a tractor, it's not a vehicle, it's a dumpster used to, again, they go and they tear down whatever, and then they bring the dumpster back and it goes on the lot.
But it's empty, I don't bring the product.
I understand that, but it's, it's, I'm just trying to figure this out. As long as I've been on this board, I've never had this come in front of us before. Where dumpsters are, well, all right, I'll say it, the dumpsters are pretty much, pretty close to residential areas, and this commercial property is close to residential areas, and I just don't see where it says that we're in charge of where dumpsters can go, construction dumpsters. I know, I understand storage units, I understand, you know, vehicles, but there's nothing in the bylaws at all saying anything about dumpsters. I mean, I haven't seen it, Andy, you can't talk to me, that's right. I haven't seen nowhere.
Yeah, I'm a little confused myself, because I thought the Board of Health would have all, all control over anything that was perishable material that would be stored somewhere, but not...
I definitely go to help, they, and I talked to them, basically, they had no problem with what I did.
They just, they don't...
Well, they don't want to deal with it, because they don't have to deal with it, they don't go that far.
Yeah.
Now it's coming in front of us and, believe me, I, as, as dumpsters are concerned, I've never seen, they come in front of the board before someone wants to store four or five, four or five dumpsters on their commercial property.
Yeah, so I think the closest thing it would come to, open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial or industrial use, kind of considered a material use, that's the closest thing we have. I mean...
I think, I think this is something Amy should look at and figure this out, because again, I feel that, I feel that there should be conditions when they stop putting dumpsters. I mean, if you let four dumpsters go here, someone else is going to come back, they want 10 dumpsters. So I think this should really, the town lawyers should look into this, because it needs to be worded, it needs to be worded a little better.
My plot plan shows I'm only going to have six dumpsters and three trucks on it.
It says dumpsters?
It shows, you've looked at the plot, and it's showing example of what it is.
But it's, it's not showing that you have dumpsters, it's not...
It's labeled as roll-off containers. It's showing pictures of roll-off containers.
There's the containers, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6...
Who approved this? Where was this approved?
I got it surveyed and I...
A survey, yes, I see that.
But I submitted to you guys last time and...
It's survey, correct, yeah, but who permitted the roll-offs?
When I was talking to the, when I, so the building before you was...
Marion or...
I sat with her, weeks discussing what had to happen, and this is what became...
Well, she, what she wanted was a plot plan showing where the dumpsters are, that's, that's all this is.
Right.
Right. It wasn't no approval or anything, she just wanted to see where they were.
That's why I'm in front of you guys, that's why I'm here.
Right. So it seems like he was of the impression that, that he could store, he could store, contain his dumpsters on his property.
Right, but we approved that, but you're questioning whether we have any authority or means to do that.
I just don't see it in what they're asking for. I don't see, you know, show me where it says you can put dumpsters, four or five dumpsters on a commercial property. I mean, if that's true, then we're going to have more of these.
Possibly.
I mean, as Mike said, the stores of goods and materials used in connection with commercial or industrial use, that would fall on that, it's not very clear.
Not very clear at all, it's like mud.
Yeah, so, but I don't know that we can...
But if I was to put six airplanes there, it still falls, it's materials, I mean, what are you going to do? It's dumpsters. I could put them on the truck, they can sit on the truck, and then I can have six trucks with dumpsters on the truck.
Well, I guess you could do that.
Well, a trailer is...
You could do that. I don't know. I have no idea.
Open lot storage.
It seems like something that would have to be resolved, maybe outside of this particular thing, because we can't really say whether you can have them there.
Well, you can make, you can make a special, you could definitely say something, you want to store those dumpsters, you have to have them on their vehicle. I mean, that, that would cover it, that would cover it. Right now, you're not covering anything. There's nothing there that says you should, could have dumpsters on a commercial property.
And it's saying nothing, it's not saying it either. It's open storage.
Open storage for construction...
I have all trailers there, I have campers there, I have...
Trailers, I can understand, campers, I could, whatever, but the dumpsters, dumpsters used in construction. I just, I just think that's...
The material used in the business is a dumpster, a roll-off. I didn't make those rules up, that's...
They're out.
It's the state law that they put there, I didn't clarify what they did.
It would seem like our zoning bylaws aren't explicitly clear on this issue, right?
Right, and I think too, if you approve something like this, then more of these things could pop up in our town.
Yeah.
And it falls on us to, you know, I mean, special permit will, it will not, if he sells the property, special permit does not go with him, correct? That's, the special permit's gone. Also, there should be conditions on something like that, pest control, higher fences, you know?
Why, I'm not using any food or hazardous material.
They're dumpsters, they're four dumpsters, I don't know what you're using them for. I don't know what you're using them for.
You go down Abington Route 18, look at people's backyard?
This is, we're talking about your property, sir, we're not talking about anybody else. We're talking about your neighbors, your property, your business. You said you've been in business for two years and you put dumpsters there because you thought you could do it.
Empty dumpsters.
They're dumpsters, the construction dumpsters. The roll-offs.
Perhaps one direction we could go here is to see if anyone else has any comments from the public, and then when it comes back to the board, we can discuss whether we want to put conditions on it or time limits, if we're allowed to do that, so that we have time to get Amy involved in this again. I'm troubled by the fact that we don't have authority to say no, because it's unclear in the bylaw that we can say no. We can put conditions on it, but we can't really say no.
Then we can't.
Yeah, we can, because I don't see where it says that you can store, store dumpsters.
Okay.
I mean, the concern I would have about conditions is who's going to be enforcing those conditions, because I don't want that to be...
The Board of Health.
Well, it's outside of purview of the Board of Health.
No, it would be definitely...
I don't know that that's something that we want to have them doing. I mean, you can't really regulate what he's storing in dumpsters or be routinely monitoring...
Well, I have a neighbor that watches it 24/7, so if there's a problem, he can probably let you know.
I know, but just in terms of what the actual violations would be, we would have to notify the zoning department, what can and cannot be stored in there, I mean, that's outside of the purview of the building department.
Yeah, pretty much we base off a zoning complaint that I get. It's not something I'd be...
No, no, we're not blaming you.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
No, I'm glad you're here, believe me, because this has been bothering me, because I'm trying to think, where does it say that we have the right to say he can put dumpsters on, on his commercial property, his four dumpsters, no matter what they are. So the next person who comes in and not, so whatever, they're going to put six dumpsters on there, you can't do anything about it.
Yeah.
Or seven, or eight, or nine.
Yeah, it's really just trying to decide if they fall under that language of goods and materials used in connection with...
Goods and materials, goods and materials, that sounds to me like construction materials and goods, doesn't sound to me like a dumpster.
Well, it does, it does seem...
It's what the bylaw has, so it's...
It does seem like you had a good idea that to get Amy, Russell, or Town Council involved in letting us know what we are allowed to do about this, if anything.
And I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a big hole, I think it's something that, I think we need to watch out for.
There are two other companies on Route 18 in Abington that have residential on the property and have dump trucks and dumpsters in the back. I'm not going to refer to their names, but you go down there, they've been in business...
Well, they have in front of this board, I, I'm not, you know, do they come for a special permit?
They've been in business for 20-something years in Abington.
I have no idea. I'm, I'm just dealing with what we have right here, right now.
All right, so we're doing a lot of discussing between ourselves about this, do we have any further questions for him right now? And then we can, if not, we can entertain questions from the rest of the audience or anybody else in the audience. What do you think?
Does anybody have anything else?
I don't have anything else right now.
Okay.
I can, just from last conversation, the discussion was, he thought I was going to do a transfer station. This is a definition of a transfer station, I'm not doing a transfer station. He referenced rats, within 500 feet of that property, we have Dunkin' Donuts, Subway, we have Tru cheese dumpsters, I got pictures of that, so I did not bring rats into this property. And for noise, right behind his backyard, there's two, two to three dump trucks that back up every morning to go to work. There's an 18-wheeler of Tru cheese that goes every day, then right by his house. There's a car wash right there that makes a noise. It's not me. I go to the property two, three times a week, so...
All right, thank you. You can probably sit down for a moment, we're going to ask if anyone from the audience would like to come up and speak to us, let us know your name and address and what you have to say. Let me be your minute.
You don't?
Mike 5874 Bedford Street, I'm the guy that watches the property 24/7. I got some pictures here of what the place looks like right now, I like to show you these. This is debris that is still there, that he still hasn't taken out, and this is the fence line that isn't closed like it should be.
So this is from...
That's from the street side, Route 18.
In terms of when it was taken?
Supposed to be solid fence. That was taken two days ago.
Okay.
He doesn't have a traffic study done, I don't know if you guys are aware of it?
I don't know this need for...
Two lanes that come from Wayman, all the way down Route 18, and where it merges to one lane, right in front of the driveway. So that could be a traffic issue with trailers and dump trucks and whatever else he has there. And I notice you've been talking about commercial properties. On the ID of the town, it's residential, 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 land and residential, he's got a two-family there. So not only is he running, he got a two-family, he's running a commercial, a business out And like you said, on that, on the thing is very vague of what he's doing. And I'm sure you have the photos that I gave you from the past four or five years of what he's done, if you don't, we have.
I think you showed it to us last time.
Yeah, we got them last time, I think.
You got them?
They're in the record for the, in last meeting.
Yeah, but it isn't that he hasn't abide by the town regular laws, he has dumpsters here from years ago, filled with debris of all kinds. And I have pictures that I showed you of the last meeting, that he had dumpsters in there with lawn mowers tipped upside down, snow blower tipped upside down, those are contaminants, right next to my property. So it isn't that he doesn't put stuff in it, because I've seen it, I've been there for the past four or five years, and you see the pictures that I showed you. So it isn't like he doesn't put debris there. And by the transfer station, I believe it's going to be a transfer station. It's got all, it's got all the sayings, roll-off dumpsters. He's got, he cleans houses out, he remodels houses or whatever he does, he takes all that debris and puts them in the dumpsters. The dumpsters are not on a hard surface, that's a bylaw from the town, that's the building inspector, they're supposed to be on a hard surface. They're supposed to be on a hard surface. Right now, they're sitting on dirt. Trucks too. The trucks are supposed to be on a hard surface. The trailers are supposed to be on a hard surface. They're supposed to be registered. He's got a bar cap there. I'm sure it ain't registered. He's got a trailer there that's not registered. And then there's another trailer. I don't know. I can't see the back of it, if it has a plate. That might not be registered. For the, for the past, when he, when he purchased the property, he's had trucks back there. He cut wood. He did all of this. I never said a word. He had trailers. He had three, four trailers. He had four, five power blades. I never said a word about that. But when those trailers start rolling in, dumpsters on a rollout truck, yeah, I do have a follow-up with that. And I'm sure all the others should have a follow-up with that too. It's gonna bring the rats. It's gonna bring the contamination and all other, the debris. He doesn't have proper drainage for the trailers. It rains. What's, what, what was in the trailers before? And right now, those, those dumpsters that are there, he has stuff in the dumpsters. He says they're empty. They're not empty. So if you have any more questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Do we have any questions for him? I mean, thank you for coming up and speaking with us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak on this matter? Just let us know your, your name and your address, please.
Sean Flaherty, 27 Temple Street. I was right behind him. The only thing, I went out there tonight and just snapped a couple of pictures. I don't have them printed out. He said that it's all fenced in, and this is the back fencing of, it's a chain link fence where the post, the top post, a tree fell on it at some point. He's never fixed it. And like, that's one of the crossbars. And the, the only other thing is if, I don't know what the town bylaws are, but like when Moore will put up that car wash, they put a real nice fence up. They put some shrubbery up. It, it helps with the noise. It helps with the, the lights. And I, we have nothing. You know, a chain link fence isn't gonna do it. I, I don't know if you could force, like, if, if this is permitted to have some natural greenery, so I don't have to look at it, or a solid, you know, nice fence that is appealing to the eye. I don't know what the rules are for, for stuff like that. Those are my concerns.
Thank you very much. Any questions for him at all?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Well, I think I would entertain a motion for us to bring it back to the board. Close the public portion of discussion for now. Or we want to pray to continue this again until we get Town Council's advice.
I don't know if we can continue it again. I'm not sure about the dates or whatever.
I mean, if you waive the timeframe, we could continue it again?
Because I think we need more information. I think. Been here long enough to know that stuff like this has to be looked at more closely. Again, because what, we could be opening up a door for other, other things. And obviously, it's getting dropped on this board's table.
Right.
Yeah. And obviously, it's not in the bylaws. We could vote on it tonight, and, or we could see what Amy says, but.
I mean, so the dumpsters themselves wouldn't constitute trailers under our definition of trailer in the bylaws?
No.
So it would really just be whether or not it meets the requirements of H5 for the open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial use?
And when I think of that, I think of, okay, lumber. I'm thinking of goods and materials. I'm not thinking of storage, open storage, dumpsters.
So where are we in the timeframe for when we have to vote on this before it just gets automatically approved?
If he agreed to continue it, then we could look at it again in April, like to talk to Amy.
Yeah.
We get the applicant to agree to that.
Yeah.
Well, we could vote on it today.
Yeah. And so we have to act within 100 days of the filing, or within 90 days following the date of the public hearing? So we're, when is the public hearing?
Initial is February 13th.
Oh, for a special permit, yeah. For, excuse me, special permits within 90 days of the, um, date of the public hearing. So, yeah, the hearing.
Kind of close.
Yeah, we'd have to have him request to agree to an extension.
It's close. Let's go and open it up again. So your, your call.
We haven't really closed it yet.
Okay.
So please come up and have whatever we want to say. Appreciate it.
All right, and I actually had a question for you, so I'm glad you're coming back up.
We know him again?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Mike 5874 Bedford Street. Now, if, if you look at the plot, the land, if you come from the boundaries, like he's supposed to be 10 feet or 15 feet, he would know. He's got less than a half an acre there.
Cut in half, the lots, right? The lot cut in half?
Well, the lot is cut in half now, to the back. But if you were to come off each, each abutis, there's nothing left. There's a half an acre. That's not a lot. There was, there was a proposal for a transfer station up the street in 1977. He had six acres, and it didn't fly. And he spent a lot of money trying to get it approved. That's all. I just wanted to tell you how small that lot's gonna be.
Right.
So it's gonna be stuff piled everywhere.
So while you're up there, just in terms of potential conditions, and one of the neighbors mentioned, if we did something with the fencing on the sightline or anything like that, would that ease any of your concerns if we?
No, not with dumpsters. It would ease his concerns. But I have, I have a seven-foot fence up right now.
Okay.
You know, that's on my property that I put up, you know?
Sure.
But it gets proved, it comes down. They take the fence down, because then he's gonna have to put up a fence.
Okay, just checking.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hate to see this going to like a court situation.
Well, it could. I mean, I mean, could, I, I don't think it should be this board's. If it was approved, I, I think we're opening a can of worms.
Yeah.
Because there's really, there's nothing in this, these bylaws about dumpsters. We did have many years ago a fight about our transport, you know, the dumpsters.
Right.
And, and if there are other companies out there right now that have dumpsters on their property, there's nothing we can do. They're not in front of us.
Right.
This is brought to us. We, we have to make a decision on, do we approve for construction dumpsters on the property or not? He's not asking for landscaping. He's not asking for that. He's not asking for, he's asking pretty much to store his dumpsters. That's what he does for a business.
I think Amy's gonna tell you, if there's nothing specifically on point in the bylaws, then it's up to your discretion how you wanna interpret that provision, whether you want it to include dumpsters, whether you wanna put any conditions on a special permit if you approve it, so.
I'd be kind of, kind of wondering about that, because I mean, if, if it's left wide open like that, what's gonna stop some company from coming in here to get a big piece of property? And saying, oh, I need a special permit? And then we're back where we started?
So.
I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
Another question is, if we, if we deny this, what, other than court, does he have any recourse? Because if the bylaws don't address it, I don't, I don't.
It can be up to our discretion, yeah. So, I mean, you have a lot of latitude, because.
Yeah.
So it would be an uphill battle. I mean, if you denied it because there's nothing that you can point to specifically saying this should be allowed under these conditions.
So we turn around and prove it, and then, and then, and then carry on and just, whatever happens, happens?
Well, I guess, you know, my, my inclination is to see if the, if the person making the petition would agree to a continuance. We'd have a chance to talk to, or to communicate with Amy about what conditions we could put on this, and if there is anything we've missed that we aren't aware of. But it just seems like such a gray area of our level of authority on this to me.
Yeah, great, yeah. I mean, I mean, who's, all right, so we say we approve this. Give him a special permit, and he puts five more dumpsters on there. What authority do we have?
Right.
Nothing, zero could put.
Right.
I'm not saying that he would do it, but I'm saying that's a possibility.
Right. So, um, before we close it to public discussion, you know, because at that point, we have to vote on it, I think. If we, if we continue, if we close it to public discussion, then we are, we have to discuss it amongst ourselves and make a decision. I think that's the way this works, right?
Well, let's look at the little cheat sheet they give us.
If you close the hearing, then you have to make, if you close the hearing, you have to make a decision, but it doesn't.
But if we leave it open and we, if we can get a continuance, at least we can get a legal opinion on what direction to take this in. We're, we're waiting in murky water here. And I agree with you about that.
I'm not, I'm not trying to, it's just something that, you know, you gotta think about it. You know, you just can't say, it's just like when, when you get to that point where you look at something and you say, well, I can't stop it, you know? We've been in that situation before where we say, hey, they've done everything they could to, you know, we've done everything we can, the neighbors, whatever. But this point here is leaving, to me, it's leaving an open door.
Well, we don't know if we're in that position right now. We, we don't know what our authority is around this by definition of what, what constitutes from a legal sense, legal sense, the storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial or industrial use, because that's what this is hanging on, as Andrew pointed out earlier. So, um, my inclination is to see if Mr. Driscoll would agree to a continuance, so we have time to ask that direct question to Town Council. And we might find ourselves in a position of not being able to, you know, or what, how many conditions we could put on this, because there is latitude, as Andrew pointed out. There is latitude for us to do that. But it's a pretty tough thing to decide on right here now.
I agree. And I don't, again, I don't, I don't wanna just say, oh, yeah, yep, and then other things happening around the town. I think it should be addressed through Town Council to see where we stand. Because this is something, like I said, I've been here a while. I haven't ever seen this before.
Right.
And I do appreciate neighbors coming out. And it's just something I haven't seen. And where does it say in all this?
Okay, so, um, since the public discussion is still open here, you know, discussing this, would you consider another continuance? Till next month, we can talk to Town Council to see how we can set this up to make it palatable to.
I'm just gonna accept it. No, but yeah, I can extend it.
You what?
I can extend it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you wanna get up and say that, Mike?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
It seems like we're not gonna resolve this here without either going to court or being in a mess.
I'm willing to wait, let Amy look it over, because it is gray area, I have to make, like I said. I'm willing to make deals, I have to put a fence up, that's fine. Again, I'm just doing storage.
Okay.
I'm doing transportation, but if Amy needs to bless it, that's fine.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I also want to express my appreciation for the neighbors' patience with this. Nothing will change between now and next month if, because we wanna see what Town Council has to say about this. And maybe she can help us with conditions or something. We just don't know where we stand. And I, I'd rather not get us in court or just have people angry about something that is in the gray area. I think that's unfair to everyone involved, including the petitioner. So I think that addressing this through Town Council first is a good idea.
Do you have a suggestion?
Please come up and say so, yes.
Did you close it?
No, yeah.
Good. Just wanted to remind you, just starting out there.
Mike 5874 Bedford Street. If the Town Council says, no, this is not gonna fly, would you come back for a meeting, or will it be just like, you know?
We have to vote, we have to vote on it. Either way, we're gonna have to vote on this.
Right, April 11th.
Right. So, um.
We just need direction.
Right, right. And again, thank you everyone for your patience. I appreciate it, both for your time and your attention to this. So I think we should vote on whether we, as a board, want to approach this with a, the petitioner has said he's willing to go along with the continuance.
What's the date on that?
The continuance.
What's the date of the meeting?
April 10th will be the next meeting.
April 10th.
I think it's the 11th, right?
What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at 2024. My apologies.
April 11th?
April 10th.
10th, yeah.
Okay, I'm confused.
They had the old schedule up.
Okay.
Oh, we did get news.
So I think we should vote on whether we want this continuance as well. I would entertain a motion for that.
Sure, I'll make a motion to continue the petition of Daniel Driscoll for a special permit under Section 17521 H2, 3, and 5, until the April 10th, 2025 meeting.
Do you need that?
Yeah, it's all.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna continue it until next month and?
Till we come from council.
Yeah, and Nick, would you?
I'll reach out there and warn them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, because I think you read it as broader implication than just this one instance. We need to, you know, make sure we do things that the town actually wants.
Dot, dot, dot.
I think you'll be in town a few times ahead of town meeting anyway, so it'll work out.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, moving on, the next item on our agenda is.
Did you just let them know that there'll be no new notice?
Yeah, yeah, no new notice, April 10th.
So you know the date, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is petition of Natalie, hoping I'm pronouncing that right. Natalie Realty LLC for special permits under Section 17521 H2 and Section 175-21 H5 for open lot storage of landscaping vehicles and trailers and materials used for its landscaping business. Property is owned by the Natalie Realty Realty LLC. The property is located at 604 Bedford Street, Abington, Mass. Located on Assessor's Map 38 Lot 7 and Map 39 Lot 2 in the highway commercial zone. Please let us know who you are and your address.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott. I'm representing Anthony Dean Italian, Dean Italian Realty LLC. With the lots of Realty and Quiver at 1165 Washington Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I do have one additional handout I just wanted to present to the board just in the meantime.
Thank you. Before, sorry, to catch you off, counsel, do you wanna designate who's voting on this before?
Yes.
Andy, if you want.
I would suggest that Mr. Burbine be the person who votes on this. Is that okay with you, Mr. Burbine?
I like that. Okay, I'll thank you.
Thank you again for your time this evening. When I just presented you, I think it's helpful just kind of see it from a 10,000-foot view of what we're talking about here. Mr. Dean Italian's property is in a highway commercial zone, as you know. And the petition that he seeks here is for a special apartment is for open container and open storage of trailers. The plan that we presented, we actually presented some plans with county there, and then in addition to that, we presented a plan that shows what Mr. Dean Italian's intentions are with respect to the property. One might say we provided too much detail of what we wanted to do and Mr. Dean Italian wanted to do. In particular, was just be very transparent in terms of both support and to the neighbors with respect to what he's envisioned with respect to the property. As you can see from the intended, intended plan, Mr. Dean Italian, sorry.
It's okay. We like these plans, aren't we?
We just don't have a lot of room.
Lot of detail. So as you can see from the plan, what we're intending is that there's gonna be nothing done with the building, especially for us. Except I would say is that Mr. Dean Italian, from a, at a static standpoint, is gonna be doing some siding and just making the building look more beautiful, one would say. But in terms of the structure itself, it's staying the same. In terms of parking, as you see on the existing plan and the proposed plan, we have existing parking. The built, commercial businesses that are already located, they're gonna stay where they're located. And then we're gonna be adding additional parking at the greater profit for Mr. Dean Italian's employees and also the vehicles that he'd be using in connection with his business. in connection with his business. You also can see there, and I just want to point out, is we have seven locations where he's gonna be storing his trailers, and those locations where he's gonna be storing his trailers, those are 30 feet in length, and I point that out because we've taken some time to figure out the layup here so that the vehicles, when they come back at the end of the day, they can get back into the spots and they're not gonna be, have to be unhitched. So those spaces are 30 feet in length of that purpose. In addition to, you see the four locations that we have for the mulch, and I'd like to point out that with respect to Mr. Dean Atelli's operations, these mulch bins and these stone bins, those are just for his existing customers that he goes out and services. This is not gonna be a retail business where we have people coming in and purchasing materials, this is just for the customers that Mr. Dean Atelli services, and obviously because of the size we're talking about here, we're talking about smaller jobs that he has for his residential customers. Larger jobs, he would just have the company that he receives mulch from delivered right to the site. In terms of the existing additions, I also like to point out is that we currently have an existing dirt drive, and our intent is not to pave anything additional. Our intent here is to grade and to, uh, uh, continue with the gravel in this area for the parking spaces, but not to pave anything over, so as not to disrupt, disrupt anything with respect to water flow as it relates to the property. In addition to that, if we look at the very rear of the property, it's our intent to keep a 20-foot buffer between the rear of the property in, in terms of clearing, in order to provide a buffer screen for Mr. Dean Atelli's neighbors to the rear of the property. And then lastly, I'd just like to point out, in terms of the configuration and layout here, is we will have one security light that is located on the property that will be enclosed by the fence that is depicted on here. We will have the entire location fenced in, for the most part, with a 30-foot gate that will be locked at night, both for security purpose and also static purposes. One of the things that's important to Mr. Dean Atelli, whose business, I should mention, has been located in Abington for the last 10 years, is that one of the things he prides himself on is the work that he does, and he intends to keep his work location just as beautiful as he does his clients' and customers' houses, so that that says something about the business that he's running. And one of the things that we're trying to do is, is get into this location, Mr. Dean Atelli is currently located at 1426 Bedford, but because of issues there, yeah, Mr. Dean Atelli doesn't want that situation to rub on his reputation within the community. So we think we've met all criteria with respect to special permit needs, and we're really excited to be able to move Mr. Dean Atelli's venture from one side of Abington to this side of Abington in order to be able to continue his business and serve the fine folks in the community.
Just so I'm perfectly clear on this, there will be no, like, retail customers coming in to look at your materials back there, anything, it's just employee parking and materials you have stored there to service clients elsewhere?
That is, that is correct. That's one of the reasons that we located within the fenced-in areas, so that it doesn't welcome any looky-looks who want to come along and try to come back there. So it's at the rear of the fenced area in order to try to prevent it from not only being seen from the street, but also just prevent people who would just want to buy, but that is absolutely correct.
Um, the building itself, do you own the building itself?
Yes.
Um, are you renting the building? Are there people living in the building?
There are two commercial spaces right now on the first floor, actually, correction, three commercial spaces. One is an office for Dean Atelli Landscaping, one is a plumber who, he's, he's there sometimes, it's, it's just himself, and then there's a gas salon, and then there's one residential apartment upstairs, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
How many, how many residents are in that residential unit? Is it two bedroom, one bedroom?
Three, three bedroom.
Yep. Did we have an issue with that one time? So I was running the business and they wanted, also rent out where they run the business?
Yes, but not, like, it wasn't a situation like this.
No, because we turned that one.
Yeah, but it was, exactly.
Do you remember what it was, they were rent, they wanted to rent out? Somebody bought a property, wanted to. What was the difference? What was the difference?
I'm trying to remember, but I don't think it was, it wasn't an open lot storage, that's for sure. This is just open lot storage.
Right, there's nothing in the bylaws saying that a business can't have residential, is there? Just trying to think, I just remember that one that we turned down. So there's only one, one rental unit?
Right.
Okay.
In the portion that's being cleared, out in the back?
Yes.
So I see where the mulch and the parking is, then there's a big swath of land there. Is that all being cleared up until, up to the 20?
So approximately 20 feet, correct.
Is there a reason to clean all that?
And it'll be, that is, one of the things that Dean Atelli Landscaping does in addition to landscaping this during the winter, if there's some.
That was the issue.
They have some plows so that they can store, uh, plows, a couple of plowheads there.
That's, they're not gonna do any other, it's not gonna, if we approve this, what's going to be approved, the seven truck trailer parking spaces in the mulch bins?
Correct.
Beyond that?
Yeah, we've shown exactly what the intent is here with the operation of the business.
And what's the fence, what's the fencing gonna be?
The fence is gonna be chain link fence. And then in addition to that, there's a, on the, uh, right-hand side of the wall, there's a stone wall that's gonna stay in place, that's existing, so that's gonna stay there.
But that's not, I wouldn't imagine that's.
No, I think that's approximately three feet in height.
And there's no?
Yeah.
There's no neighbor on the right side across from the, the light bulb? There's not gonna be any light penetration issues or anything like that?
The light's facing the opposite side.
Okay.
Um, in addition to that, there is a, farther down that street, there is a neighbor, um, but that's the, that's the reason that we're leaving the 20-foot screen is for privacy purposes.
And what is the business hours? Business hours?
Yeah.
So, normal business hours are generally 7:00 AM, and so generally during the summer, when, just before sunset. Landscaping, as you know, is one of those businesses that unfortunately, that dictates a lot of its operational hours, but that generally speaking would be 7:00 or 7:10.
Do you also plow? Do you have, are you gonna be storing vehicles here?
Yes, yeah.
And where would they go?
The vehicles would be the same vehicles, but I've just mentioned it, you may have not heard, but we just talked about that a minute ago.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's okay, it's at the back, there's the kind of open area.
Yep.
Before you get to the 20-foot buffers, that's the intent is to store the plowheads.
Okay.
That's the correct term, plows.
What would the, you know, snow plowing happens, you know, around the clock in the wintertime? Is that, that what we would, would imagine that would, that's what you would continue doing, right?
That would be the, yeah, based on weather conditions.
And though, is this, this only house that's pretty much close to the, the property here?
That, that is correct.
590?
Yes, Mr. Akins property, correct.
Is there a fence there? Are you gonna put a fence up there or anything, or?
Intent is to run a fence down the side, correct.
Excellent, excellent, maybe some shrubbery or something, just to block, especially during the wintertime, if your plows are coming in and out, you might want to just protect that building so they don't get your headlight, the headlights, stuff like that.
Right now, you've just shown the chain of fence on that side.
Right, where you could change, where you could cha, change the fence on that side there to address a very.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying for your neighbors, I mean, it, it, it's just a courtesy thing.
Yeah.
Just bring up courtesy thing.
Yeah, we have, we have lots of, you know, we have lots of businesses in this area which are intended to be part of the community, and so therefore we want to do everything we can to not only make our neighbors happy, but correctly, who are part of us, but also the people who go out and down the street.
But just sticking with that, what, what would you propose with down on the south and around and suffer?
Maybe.
Mulch fire?
The left side, you mean?
Yes.
They got a pretty good area here where they could, that's a damn good area in the parts.
Chain link fence.
It's a pretty open. Oh, yeah, we put a deck on it, a deck on it. We're just talking if there was a fire out back there with the mulch or something, that you got a great piece of, great piece of property, that a fire truck could get back there if they needed to, it seems, seems good.
I think that was one of the other considerations in talking to the town plan earlier, was just making sure we place things with kind of those things in mind.
Excellent.
And I think it, it just going back, so what we talked about is putting arbovites down the left side with the chain link fence, just providing your shoulder, privacy screening.
Yeah, you always got to be courtesy for the neighbor over there, that's for sure. Um, any problems, guys, with the Route 18 vehicles going in and out?
I already got vehicles up on the other end of town, and there's two lanes on each side there, and there's two lanes on each side here are pretty close, that they switch to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing, just on that point, is that we're not, because we're not gonna be having retail, it's not a flow of traffic.
Not like, you know.
Early, late, um, for the most part. And the other thing is that a lot of times it's important, you know, drop locations, capital, and also just meet at the job site. So we're also taking those things into consideration.
So it looks like you got plenty of parking.
Is the parking exclusively for employees? All these proposed parking?
All this parking in the rear is all for employees and of the company, correct? In terms of staff, it's, it's just Anthony, and then he's hiring an office person, so there's not additional staff that's gonna be coming in and out at all, that's not here.
And a portion of that proposed parking is gonna be behind the gate that sends the lot in.
Yeah, most of it is. I think there's seven space, uh, seven spaces that are not, or maybe eight. Seven.
Seven.
Seven, seven spaces are not gonna be behind a, a parking, the right side.
With your dumpster?
At your, at your, that's, how many floors do you have?
Uh, maybe 12.
During the summer?
Yeah, that's like, yeah, but it's, yeah. Like I said, a lot of them cock bull, like Scott said.
Yeah.
Well, it seems like there's not many neighbors around here. Very wide open.
Do you have more questions for these two?
I'm good. It, it, can I ask a question? Is, is 590 Bedford, is, is that a single family or a complex? Is that?
That's an office building.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, it's an office building?
And I'm his, I'm his neighbor.
What?
Akins.
Oh, yours, okay, okay, I got you.
590?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have Mr. Akins.
Excellent.
I see you.
I was gonna grab.
Excellent.
All right. All right, let's, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I'll see if anyone else has anything to, to say to us tonight, or, and then we'll make our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else in the audience want to come up and speak? Can just let us know your name and your address and.
Peter Akins.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So.
Did you want to say anything, Mr. Akins?
No.
Does anybody want to get up? No?
We're with him.
Okay, are you guys want to get up?
Why, guys?
Can I ask, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Just, do you mind coming up just for a second?
So, just. Let us know your name and address, just for the record.
Uh, Peter Akins. Um, 57 Campbellwood Lane in Braintree.
Okay.
So, so you're not living at 590 Bedford Street, obviously?
No, that's an office building.
That you own?
That's what you own.
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
So we had talked earlier with the, the applicant about putting a reg, some buffer arbovites, is that?
Yeah.
Something that you'd be happy with, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there you go.
This is the property.
Mm-hmm.
And I own this and all this.
Oh, back there too, okay.
Beautiful. Big piece of property.
Yeah.
Are you okay with what the project? Did you get to take a look at the project? Are you feeling comfortable with it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we just wanted to know if you feel comfortable with it, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as he puts a fence up.
Do you care what type of fence? Would you prefer?
Stockade.
Stock, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Or, or, he's, he's proposing chain link with arbovites.
Okay.
Is that?
Is that good?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. All right, we just wanted to check with you to make sure everything was good.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much, sir.
Don't forget your, don't forget yourself over there. Some bodyguards you are, you're letting them walk away without.
We give them a chance, we give them a chance.
Okay, very good. Uh, is there any further questions of the petitioner? If not, we'd entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing. So. Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This, this seems pretty well put together to me, and I think that for this kind of a business, that's a fantastic location.
Yeah. Only thing I worry about is 18, but then again, he's running, everyone's running a business out of off 18. You got, you see all throughout the street, you have all these different companies, so shouldn't be a big issue. And it's good to see that the neighbor is, uh, not too concerned.
You know, it's sort of, you know, on a, from 18's standpoint, it is sort of near the entrance into the town hall and high school area. I don't know if that's a concern to anyone, it's just that sometimes of the day, it's so busy there and that, that's a business problem.
They gotta be out doing work all day, probably coming back at, at four or five, six.
It's the, in the morning, when the kids show up and they're not paying attention, it's.
Well, it is a pretty good distance, I mean, this is what we're talking about, there's the entrance to.
Yeah, that's true.
It's a pretty good, yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta go through all that, and it's, you know, it's over here, so.
Yeah.
So I think it's not a bad location at all.
No, no, I, I think it was, I just wanted to bring that up in case anybody had concerns about that.
Sorry about that. That's me.
Okay, um, well, any further discussion amongst the board?
If we approve it, I would like to add those conditions, no retail customers.
Right.
That the chain link fence and arbovites be put on the south side that abuts Mr. Akins' business.
I quite agree with that.
That the fencing gate have a lock on it so it can be locked.
Right.
And that the area beyond the mulch and parking be used just for storage of plowheads and not for anything else.
Right. Because he, I understood that the, the trucks they're using in the summer will be, have the plowheads on them in the winter, and their, their hours will change.
Right.
I don't think that's going to affect much of anything other than probably the person living in, or the persons living in their, uh, opposing rental, but that's.
Yeah.
That's the, the property owner's problem.
Yep.
Okay, um, I would entertain a motion here if anyone was here to give one.
Well, I will make a motion on the petition of Dean Atelli Realty LLC for special permits under 175-21H2 and 175-21H5 for open lot storage of landscaping vehicles and trailers and materials used for its landscaping business, that we approve the, uh, the, the special permits with those conditions. No retail customers, uh, that the fencing gate have a lock, that the storage beyond the mulch and parking in the rear is for plowheads only, and that on the south side of the property that abuts Mr. Akins' property would be a chain link fence and arbovites for our screening.
That everything?
Yep.
You're good? Second for that?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The petition passing will pass along the paperwork when it's available. Thank you, I apologize for poaching your name, apologize I do.
Good luck, good luck with everything. Looks like a good plane, good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Take care.
The last petition, is that Dean isn't?
That, uh, they were wrong.
Okay. So we're not like on for next week or anything, or?
Next month?
I don't even know what they're, because they, can you tell me, two, two families, was it two family?
My understanding, it's a vacant lot, I believe they had a older special permit for a four-family. They thought that expired, the lawyer advised them it did not.
Oh.
Um, they were applying to go for a six, and they, I think, elected just to go back to the four.
The four, oh, good. Excellent.
I think the four went through planning board and concom and the lawyer explained to them that every hurdle needs to be, not again.
Very good. Uh, I just want to say that on, you know, on what the dumpsters, I wasn't, thank you very much for being here.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't, I just wanted to be clear on the whole thing, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not a clear thing in there.
No, and we're, and once we find those things, we need to really just, really, I think, look at it de- as deeply as we can before we vote on it.
Yeah.
All right, that's it.
So I would entertain a motion to, um, close the hearing.
A second.
Well, somebody has to make this motion.
I'm always going to do it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1798.72]